I'd like to welcome me to the City of Mormon's Regular Meeting of Council for Monday, June 10th, 2019. We will start it. Does anyone have any announcements? Hearing them, we'll move down to approval of the agenda. Counselor Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion that the agenda for June 10th, 2019, Regular Meeting of Council be approved.
Secondar, Counselor Peterson. Any comments there? Okay, all in favor? Moving down to approval of minutes. We have minutes and Committee of the Whole, whole minutes. Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to move that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held on May 21st, 2019, and Regular Meeting of Council held on May 27th, 2019, be taken as read and adopted.
Do you have a secondar for that? Counselor Jones? Is there any comments, questions, errors, omissions?
Yes.
Hearing them, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Administration report, starting with City Manager Smith.
I just have the one report, your worship. It's the report on the KAMA Conference, the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators. I just provided some information, some of the workshops that were at the conference. And yeah, it was a good conference, and thank Council for allowing me to attend again this year.
Does anyone have any questions of conference, about this report? Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question about the strategic planning. They talked a little bit about that, asking Council what's success. I saw the theme a little bit of working with Council, and I liked that. Is that usually the angle they go with the KAMA Conference?
There's several different parts. So this year it was resilience, and so that was building resilience, and whether that's emergency service, climate change, and they go on through a whole bunch of different aspects. And then they also have HR and of course, relationship building with politicians, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that... Yeah, no, I guess I was just, if it's always sort of the theme of working with your Council, it's sort of...
That would be just one kind of session. They do one on demographics, and they do some of the toolkits that they're building, which Council's aware of, the CAO toolkit, and things like that.
I appreciate the information.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Smith. Moving down to City Clerk's report.
So we have finished the spring cleaning for 2019. I do have a recommendation in here for Council to approve the disposal list. The first is self-explanatory. Once you guys approve the records, I'll be sending them off to Saskatchewan Archive Boards for final inspection. If they give us their thumbs up, we'll hire a shepherd to come through.
Okay, well, we'll start with the motion. Do you have a motion? Counselor Philchuck?
I'll make the motion that the records, as listed in the City of Mormon List of Records for Disposal 2019 document, are approved for disposal.
Do the secondar for that motion? Counselor Brad? Any questions? I just have one. Is there, so I kind of went through that list. Is there anything in there that might form pieces of our history that we want to keep? Like that you went through it. So is there anything in there that...
There was nothing in there that we, like, we did go through a bunch of correspondence, and it has been stuck, it's filed away for permanent for that purpose, so that's not on the list. And if the Archive Boards go through it, and they come to their attention that we should be keeping it for history, they'll let me know, and then we'll put it in the pending box as well.
Okay, good.
I do have one, couple of questions, just underneath the Administration and the Taxes section. There's a couple of pieces there. This is Kevin with his day job questions. With the assessment notices, the tax assessments, and say, the assessment changes in sound inspection reports, is there anything that still is outstanding in any format at either municipal boards or Court of Appeal, related to any of our assessments?
No, these would be fairly old.
Granted, they would be, but...
Yeah, there's nothing outstanding. We don't have any outstanding that passed that seven years, or 10 years, or whatever.
The reason I ask is, we do have stuff that's outstanding, that goes back into some of those territories, so that's why I asked the question.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving down to Planning and Development. I didn't see Brad, is he having some...
Oh, sorry. Actually, Brad sends his regrets. He is not feeling well today. But he has presented one item for Council's consideration. In 2017, the City of Mormon closed an alley behind the property at 804 Sixth Avenue South. The owner purchased the property in order to consolidate the alley with a parcel they owned to the east of it. This was to help facilitate the development of a discretionary home occupation, which is a greenhouse. The greenhouse has been in operation for close to five years now, and the city has not received any concerns or complaints related to it. The site is bordered by light industrial to the south and residential to the north. So a recommendation from Planning and Development Manager is that Council pass a motion approving the consolidation of all of the lots 5 to 8 and the lane in Block 1 Plan I 3169.
Okay, do we have a motion there? So I want to make that motion. Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that for Council to approve the consolidation of all of lots 5 to 8 and lane in Block 1 Plan I 3169, Southwest 1 Quarter, Section 31, Township 38, Range 4, West Third Meridian, Wong, Saskatchewan.
A secondar for that. Counselor Philchuck, is there any questions? Counselor Beck?
So, like, obviously, like, there's going to be four, let's say, subdivided portions already, plus the alleyway, and whatever, so that's going to become one taxable entity now, rather than four other ones? Is there a tax loss on that?
No. No, it would be assessed the same.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess that's what I was, you know, just...
Yeah, the consolidation. I don't believe if there would be any, it's fair land, so if there'd be anything, it'd be minimal, but not normally do we see a whole bunch of change from assessment when you consolidate versus including the lane might even increase.
So, the land use for that, obviously, like, there's commercial up and behind it and whatever, is this still going to be deemed residential, or what's the classification?
I think it's commercial. We'll have to check into that.
Light industrial?
It'll either be commercial or light industrial. He doesn't have that in his report.
And, you know, this year, I'm like, that could be provided at a later date, you know, this year I'll find with that, but certainly if I could get that question answered, you know, just to know if that is deemed residential, or if it is going to be commercial, or that license that's light industrial classifications. So just as long as, obviously, the land use that that's expected from it is certainly responsible for that area, I guess that's my biggest concern.
Make sure that the land use and the zoning are married.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Karen G.
The casino's the same question about the...
Doesn't, on that projected use, isn't that the zoning there, on the, on that, on the Appendix C?
I'm on Appendix C.
Yeah, and on the right.
So it's just...
No, it says projected use, UTM Zone 13 and extended.
Yeah, it says, but I'm not, I'm not sure if the projected u, projection used, I'm not really sure about that. We don't have, I don't think we have a UTM Zone 13.
I wasn't sure.
But I'll get that information back to Council.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, a motion to file Administration reports. Counselor Tulley?
Make the motion that Administration reports for June 10th, 2019, be accepted and filed as presented.
Do we have a secondar for that? Counselor Beck, does there any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to Council and Committee reports. We'll start with the Mayor's report. It's just for your information, there's one resolution in there, and that is, a resolution is needed for Council members to attend the Rocky Roots Reconciliation Event on June 21st. So do we have a motion for that? Counselor Philchuck?
I guess I will make the motion for Council members to attend the Rocky Roots Reconciliation Event, June 21st, in Saskatoon. I guess, are we listing the names, or who all can make it, or just leave it open to the ones again?
I think just leave it open, and they can...
Okay. That'll be my motion, to leave it open.
Okay, a secondar. Counselor Beck, is there questions there? Okay, all in favor? Does anyone know at this time if they'll be able to attend?
I won't be able to attend.
I should be able to.
Okay. So I guess if you're going to attend, maybe connect with Aaron. There's not anyone that you need to let know anyway on the other side, but just so that, I guess, we know who's going to be going from Mormon.
Do we know the time?
Okay, is there any questions in my report? Okay, hearing them, we'll move down to Student Council report.
Good evening. I have a few things in my report. So in the school, we are preparing for the finals that are coming up next week, so it's catching up, school's going to be over. We had some handful of students who wanted to Diamond Rodeo this weekend for the kids, though. I fortunately did not get to make it, but heard it was fun for the kids as well. Seniors are currently planning their senior prank day, which is happening this week. Mr. Philchuck does not know the date, so we're hoping it'll be a nice fun day. They had to skip day on Friday the previous week, so the all seniors skipped that day. And I think the younger kids like, yeah, like waiting up for the one the seniors do, so they can skip as well, so that keeps, like, the motivation up. I think, like, the prayer religions that grade 12s have too, so...
I didn't know they had such a thing. They actually have a skip day.
A skip day, and they do...
Is that only in Mormon?
Self-governing day?
Yeah, it's not approved.
Okay.
It's called skip day.
Yeah, the awards are coming up next week, on the 18th, so that's going to be an upbringing for the students as well. Finals will begin after that. First final is going to be in the afternoon, and the rest are just normal ways. The younger kids are enjoying playing at the BMX and skate parks a lot. I was there the other evening, and I noticed they closed it down to remodel it, so that's a nice, and a question came up to me was, is it this golf track installed? I was going to drive by today, but I didn't.
It's not yet, but I believe it's state. So it's being planned out. It just has, has yet to have the standards yet. It's coming.
That's all in my report. Any questions?
Could you not combine, it sounds like those two days could go together, and maybe that's something you can lead towards in the future, that the skip day and the prank day could almost be a thing. You prank and then you leave, might be, just something to suggest.
You got special plans?
That might be coming from, talk to admin over there, it'd be a nice thing.
You gotta be careful with your car. I heard some rumors about your car being something happening on some day, so...
Wednesday, yeah.
You better be.
Any other questions?
Back to school.
He's walking this week.
So Karen G., are you aware of the BMX opening tomorrow? Yeah, there's, the new BMX remodel is going to have an opening tomorrow. I think it's from 6 till 8, is that right, Aaron? 6 till 8, so...
Morning in the afternoon.
In the evening, after supper. So there's yourself, or let me get the word out there, and if there's any Council members that are wishing to attend, I know that they're hoping to have some representation, so... Okay. So, no questions? We'll move down to our FCM report. So we've just given you just a small piece of what the three of us were busy doing in Quebec. It was a busy time, a good time. There's a lot of information. I want to thank Aaron for putting this together for us. And if you have any questions, there's three of us here to answer, or if you think of any afterwards, don't hesitate to contact us. There you have it, our report. Any questions about that, or... Okay, let's move down to a motion to file these reports. Who is going to do that? Counselor Jones?
Motion that Mayor, Student Council, and Council's FCM Conference Report for June 10th, 2019 be accepted and filed.
A secondar for that. Counselor Schramm, any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to Council Roundtable, let's start with Counsel Philchuck today.
Okay, if you had a chance to be part of the parade, there's a few of us over there. I guess at the end, it's always nice being at the front, because I know Counselor Beck and myself held back and watched the whole parade after, which gives us a chance to see everything that was there, and gain the energy of the Shriners there. Lots of people using it to advertise, expose themselves, or when exposed, the companies are with, expose themselves, yeah. Probably not the best way to put it. Local clubs, businesses, so lots of variety of what you see within the surrounding area. So there's right from Ozler all the way through Martinsville, and all the different types of businesses. Rodeo, had a chance to volunteer and attend. Mormon High School, I don't know if you know, that had direct benefits from the past, right from the gym floor. That hardwood floor was a major undertaking that the rodeo just came and rode to check for. Canoes that, with our outdoor ad, probably one you didn't know about, canoes that we wouldn't have outdoor ad without their help that way, and then every year with the scholarships. So just getting a chance to go talk to them and say hello, and, I mean, from Mormon High School side, I do it from that side, and I know that we appreciate it from that side, as well as the city, and I made that clear, that we appreciate that event within the city. Great crowds when I was there Friday, Saturday, and then I went on Sunday, and Friday was, Saturday night, it was packed. Like, it was unbelievable how many fans were around there. Everything, all the bleachers were full. FCM, just a couple points I wanted to mention with that one, that this is the first time I've been there, where they've actually had all the leaders that were speaking, and I think FCM has raised the profile of itself by getting that level of speaker there, because a lot of times they were getting finance ministers or other people talking. But I think when you have the leaders, and FCM just posted today that they have all those speeches, that you can actually go click and listen to their speeches, they all promise a lot for municipalities and wanting to work municipalities, and, but that has a lot, you know, that's right from the top. These are incredibly smart people running their parties, and it's a pleasure to meet them, and just see all the energy that they want to have in their own direct ways, because it is, it is nice. You don't realize that, how much time, commitment, and, again, they're being challenged on a lot of their thinking over and over and over again, so it's great to have. That's a highlight for me, definitely, at FCM. Also want to say that having Mayor Spence a part of FCM, you can sure see the benefits, because she knows everyone. She knows everyone there, and it really, from getting invited to some of the CN events, to her knowing the president, the presidents coming up and the future presidents, it's, introduced us to those people along the way. So really, a lot of the people, decision makers, within FCM, we had a chance to meet, and I thank Mayor Spence for those opportunities, because those would have been new people to me, and I definitely had a chance to chat with each one of them. And I think, I just want to mention a little bit, what, you know, our meeting that we had last week, talking about the environmental, it does open our eyes up to the challenges of funding here coming up, too, both dealing with the lagoon and the second rink. So I know those are things that we'll have to discuss along the way, and do a lot to try and get that funding through, through grants. So we'll see what we can do, and we'll have to work hard to make that happen, so that was a special meeting this week.
Yeah, how can you follow that? For me, it was a shame I couldn't join in to do the parade, and the meeting, I totally agree with Counsel Philchuck, we do have some challenges ahead for our good and for the next rink. One thing that, I had a meeting today with Neil Sernicki, and we had lunch together, and I'm very pleased with the choice that they have made in bringing him in to looking after the P4G director. And we agreed with a lot of things together, in our vision, in what the whole P4G looks like, and what it needs to be, and I'm just looking forward to working with them. That's all I have.
Well, I'm going to mention the rodeo again, but mainly because it was the first time that I've actually been to the rodeo, in the rodeo, because in the past with young kids, I've always kind of been helping Nicole, and, you know, taking them out to watch the rodeo, but they're old enough now that I had them be part of it with me. They had a lot of fun passing out candy and helping, helping pass out candy for, with me there, so it was really enjoyable to have them along with me in the rodeo and to be part of that.
Did you guys run out of candy?
Yeah.
There was this much at the bottom of a bucket that Caleb had, that he hadn't thrown out yet, so he said, "Can I keep it?"
Anything else?
No, that's...
Counselor Tulley?
Again, to mention the rodeo, unfortunately, I got to be the fourth one to talk about it, but it was part of the rodeo on Saturday, the rodeo parade, and I drove a gator, which housed the candy, which everybody was coming to fill up, and I successfully didn't run anybody over, so everybody else here, welcome.
We're going away?
Yeah, yeah, everybody else is welcome for not running over. And it was kind of by the Brian King Center, I think, we kind of ran out of candy, so we did, we did pretty good.
Yeah, that's excellent.
We actually did pretty decently. What started that, I don't think I have a whole lot to report on.
Okay, Counselor Jones?
I did not attend the rodeo, but I heard great things, actually. A lot of people I talked to said that on Saturday night in particular is the busiest they've ever seen it, so that's a good news story, considering that there is some thought that it might not happen this year, great to hear. FCM, so attended with Mayor Spence and Counsel Philchuck, and that was very interesting. I did enjoy listening to the four leaders. I found it sometimes entertaining, a lot about how, you know, very political this year, of course, so they're going to be awesome, and watch out for that guy. But, very good. You know, a few takeaways, a few of the things that we did have, you know, what we have going on, we went to that Videotron Tour, big, beautiful, new arena that they have right beside the old Coliseum, and the intent of the tour really was a shorty facility within Talkable, because it came in at a budget of $400 million, it came in at $370 million, and it came in on time. And, you know, the presenter struggled a little bit with the language, but it was really an interesting presentation about management. You know, really the message was, you know, even to our level, to not let things, don't manage by hope, you know, to manage with intention, and if you do, it's amazing, you know, the results that you can achieve. So when I do think of our lagoon, and I think of our rink, I think that's a good lesson right from this level, that, you know, they're not something over there that we're just going to hear about every five or 10 minutes, so that's something that we really have to pay attention to, on the, around the governance and the decisions we make on, you know, really we'll stick into the scope and the intents of the facilities, so, you know, went to lots of great things, but that was one that really stuck with me, and it's pretty relevant for what we're going through.
I like that. Manage with intention. That's good words.
For sure.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah. So I do want to lead off the rodeo, because, you know, certainly with the, you know, with the rodeo and the amount of energy, you know, or let's say, community energy that, you know, that certainly comes from that, you know, it certainly is worthy of talking about. So, you know, with the parade, you know, it was, you know, certainly great to see, you know, the actual attendance there. I'm like, I know for me, I tried, you know, you know, like, you know, getting right into the crowd there to hand out candy, and, you know, I'm like, the people that really didn't expect to kind of, you know, walk away with candy, and just to see their faces light up, it was certainly really great. So thank you very much for every, you know, for all of the administration, for the, you know, for the purchasing of the candy, and there was certainly enough to go around there, so that was great, so job well done. At the end, I was with Gary Philchuck, and the RCMP were on bicycles. Anyways, I had some recommendations for next year, being brought forward, you know, from the RCMP, and that is, with this year, the bicycle police there, they actually did stop a few, let's say, like, a few vehicles, because they actually got intermingled into the parade, and some were actually going against traffic. I know I stopped one vehicle myself, and kind of, you know, gave, you know, had certainly given him, you know, some, you know, let's say, some help in terms of trying to get, you know, trying to get out. But yeah, with this year, he was trying to go against the flow of the parade, so I let him know that that was not going to work out.
Didn't have roadblocks, or...
No, he would have come down Centennial, let's say, from the fire department, you know, in that kind of thing, so, but, yeah, so just as the parade was basically just rounding Peters, heading north on Centennial, with this year, he was, he was right there at the corner. So he was a big, you know, let's say, F350 dollar, probably looking F350, you know, diesel, and, yeah, so he was kind of, like, in the middle of things, so he kind of suggested that he, you know, you know, find the first gap, and basically make it through, and go up in behind 711, you know, to make his way out. But yeah, he wanted to head out to, you know, to Wagon Wheel Restaurant, so I let him know that that probably wasn't the best idea, because the owner and his staff just drove right by. So anyways, but, yeah, certainly with this year, the RCP, you know, certainly, you know, did recommend a little bit more, you know, roadblocks.
Like marshals, maybe, or road marshals?
Well, this year, none of the intersections that I had come across actually had any, you know, barricades or roadblocks. And there again, even right on Centennial and Sixth, or, pardon me, Central and Sixth, you know, and that kind of whatever, that, there wasn't an actual barricade there, and if you just think of all of the traffic kind of coming through, you know, so anyways, with this year, that was, you know, just something to, you know, to put forward here to the future.
Even on Central, there was still traffic. As we were starting the parade, there was still traffic taking place, so...
Yeah, well, yeah, because like, even coming down Sixth, I know that they sent the gator up, you know, and that kind of thing, and the bylaw officer was, was, was still near the railroad tracks, and that kind of thing, so it's not like, you know, it's not like bylaw was, was kind of, you know, let's say, out ahead of it, you know, anything in that kind of thing, so, and it's, there again, so I think, you know, like, we might be able to just provide the, like, the rodeo committee, just a little bit more support, you know, with that there in the future. So, yeah, with this year, if that could just be on the radar, that'd be great. But yes, the community energy was absolutely fantastic, and it was, you know, certainly advertised there as Rodeo Day, or, you know, let's say, the rodeo and family days, and there's a lot of other events kind of going on to go with it, so that was great. Upcoming, I am looking forward to a meeting, well, actually, several meetings later on this week, of the Mormon Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee, so we basically meet here on the 13th. We have a whole host of new members to, you know, to welcome to this committee, so that's, you know, that committee is really expanding its base, and, yeah, I'm certainly looking forward as to what, you know, what can come from that there coming forward. Also, on the 13th, we have our staff barbecue, so definitely looking forward to that, and I have extra propane tanks already set up, ready to go. And one of, one of the events that probably actually could have been put under announcements is the Mormon Community Association. They're actually doing a seniors appreciation dinner, so that's going to be on the 13th here also. So with this year, the goal behind that there is, you know, for the Mormon Community Association to, you know, certainly recognize the seniors and all of the work there that they've done, and also, you know, like, some of the volunteering things, you know, that they've certainly participated in and whatnot, so that'll be on the 13th, so I've got a crazy busy day on that one. And then prior to next meeting, I also have my Assummate Board meeting, so I'll be down to Regina for that, and bring back news as to what happens at that event.
Okay, thank you. Lots happening. Okay, we're moving down. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen G.
There was something in the report that I wanted to find out. It was about Counselor Jones' experience at the Videotron Center.
Gary left me there.
I was there too. We both, right?
No. So we used the back stairways to go up and down all the floors, so at the very end of the tour, at the, on the ninth floor, which was basically up on the rack, and we looked down, kind of, okay, tour was over, we gave everybody back the bus, so on the way out, there was myself and another couple gentlemen that had to use the facilities, so we followed our way back, but we got to a point where you needed a card, and the guy who had the card, so the door behind us locked, and the one in front of us wasn't unlocked. So, I don't know how long, we didn't have a phone, I don't know how long we'd be there. So I phoned Gary through on the bus, and sent him a picture of where we were in the building, so they could come back and get us, and it took a little bit of time, so, yeah. But there's nothing, there's nothing going on there, so if they'd have left the bus, and Gary didn't know I was missing, I don't know how long we'd have been sitting there. Come back. Okay, so that's my story.
Okay, moving down to other reports. So we have, oh, I did miss correspondence, sorry, thank you. We have a letter here from our Honorable Donna Harpower, Minister of Finance, so if we can have a motion to file that letter? Counselor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that the letter from Donna Harpower, Minister of Finance, be filed as read.
A secondary, councillor Schramm, is there any discussion there? Yes, councillor Beck?
I'll be bringing that forward to SUMA.
Anything else?
Is, does it need a response back? I mean.
I don't, I, I don't know how you respond back to it, to be honest.
Really, from a municipal letter, like, you know, I, I find it difficult to respond back to it. Yeah, with this year, you know, honestly, with this year, I think it is something for, you know, you know, for information kinda going to the SUMA board. You know, you know, just because, like, there was quite a bit of information, you know, you know, put out through the SUMA update, and it's, it's been, you know, definitely a focus of, of the, uh, SUMA board, you know, to, uh, you know, to certainly look at the excise tasks, uh, you know, there for cannabis and whatnot, and also how the, how that form relates into the revenue sharing. So honestly, with this year, I mean, I think as municipal leaders, I think we've done our job, you know, I think we've reached out, we've, we've asked the questions, you know, we've done that in a very responsible way. We certainly thank, uh, you know, the Minister of Finance for her, you know, for her written correspondence back. And that, you know, quite honestly, now with this year, I think you, I think you kick it up to the people there that, you know, that can advocate a little bit harder on that, and, 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 and certainly, you know, you know, see exactly how, how that kinda fits into, you know, to the grand scheme of things. Because certainly that's the way that the, you know, you know, that the document is certainly worded, so. Quite honestly, I, I feel satisfied that Warman has, has certainly done a fantastic job on this, and, um, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think that's, now, moved on to the next level.
And you have to remember, it's not the only venue where we've had this conversation with the minister, both Gary and I have had the same conversation at, at a different venue with the same, pretty well the same response.
I, I understand that, I just, Wendy's, is it important enough to keep at it, or is it enough, or is it done enough and let it go? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have that answer, but I see it is CC did Gordon Barnhart, the SUMA president, so it, it was going up to that level, but I think it was also stating that somewhere along the way, the facts are mixed up one way or another. Because they're very determined it's one way, and, and SUMA's very determined it's another way, and I guess somewhere in between, I'd like to figure out what, where exactly this is coming from, and who's right and what the numbers are, and where, where does it make sense for the municipality and how much to push, so. So I, I guess that'll bring that to a bit more of a, you know, it was already going to SUMA through this, and, and I, I think it's, because she sees it very much as to, uh, to revenue share. And she sees if you get this, then we maybe lower that, and, and so it's like a.
Not even lower, one or the other.
Right, so, so it's an interesting, interesting twist on some things there too, so it's, it's, if you wanna ask for stuff, ask, but then we're gonna reduce this, so. So it is interesting take, and I don't know where SUMA will go, something like that, because the greater good would be probably the revenue sharing as it is, so. So I, but I'd still like to see all the numbers that go with it, 'cause this is something that was an add-on for the province and add-on for municipalities, so.
I think where SUMA could help is if they could get all the facts, um, facts accurate, because they do seem to be inaccurate from around Canada. The different provincial jurisdictions, just to find out what, what they do and how it relates to their revenue sharing, because we're hearing that they're different, so I, I'd like to, I think it'd be important to find out just what those actual facts are from around, around the nation.
They agree to plot.
Okay, um, any other questions or any other comments there? Okay, all in favor? Moving down to other reports. So we have the Tivity Report. Is there any questions there? The RCMP media release for May twentieth to twenty seventh, and May twenty seventh to June thirtieth. The Legends Golf, um, Club Board Meeting Minutes. And also the Golf Club email from Davidson. And month and financials. So I guess we can have a motion, councillor Schramm?
I'll move the Tivity Report for May twenty nineteen. The RCMP media releases for May twentieth and June third, twenty nineteen. And the Legends Golf Course Board Minutes and Financials from April twenty nineteen be accepted and filed as read.
Do we have a secondary? Councillor Jones, is there any questions or further discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Good, thank you. Communications, Erin?
Good evening. So I provided you with the usual social media statistics. Um, and it's no surprise, but Public Works is very popular. Business visits, we had a couple last week, and I'm sure Mayor Spence would agree, but there, it's really interesting going out and connecting with business owners. Um, I enjoy it, they enjoy it, I think you do as well. I know Tracy really likes meeting with everyone. Uh, we had a couple of school visits with big groups both times, and I think it worked out pretty well, given the group size. And KNG proved to be very popular amongst all the kids, so that was nice to see. I finished my saskular training, and just a reminder that the barbecue is this week, and it's gonna be hot that day, so.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Erin?
Should I wear a hat? No.
You don't wanna burn the neck, I guess.
Everything's ready for it. As far as the ordering, the barbecue and everything will be set up there.
Yep, everything's all good to go.
Karen Sheat, you're aware of the barbecue, are you?
Yes.
To make sure. Well, if this.
So just one point, actually, on the, um, on the, on the appreciation lunch with this year. Um, I know I had said that I was gonna be there early and whatnot, I actually have a teleconference meeting that runs from ten to eleven, so I let them know that eleven would be the absolute latest, that I'd be able to stay, and then, you know, that I'd run over, so. Um, so I, so I don't think I'm gonna be the support there that I, you know, that I had first stated, so I wanted to pass that along.
Thank you for letting me know.
But, but like if there is anything prior to nine o'clock or whatever, and that kind of thing, let me know, and I'll, you know.
I think we've got it covered, so, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, is there anything that anyone around the table feels that we need to, to highlight this week through our social media?
Not sure if we need to highlight, but I just wanted to, uh, I was doing a bit of research, so. In regards to that property that we just talked about, that the zoning of it, the amalgamation of the lots, uh, it's always been residential R two. Council did approve the property as a home-based business with a greenhouse in the back of the property. So, uh, it won't change, and that zoning will stay the same unless something else is applied for, then it'd go through the same rezoning, advertised, bylaw, et cetera, so.
Okay. So, so that's just gonna remain R two?
Yes, and it will have that greenhouse on it, if it changes, then that will have to come back to council.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to, um, communications, is there anything that anyone would like to highlight this next week? Erin and then, I guess we'll just put our heads together like we normally do, Erin, and look through the city and get some social media posts going. That's good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, if I can have a motion to file a report. Councillor Tully?
I'll make the motion that communications report for June tenth, two thousand nineteen be accepted and filed as presented.
A secondary? Councillor Jones, any further discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to city accounts. Do we have a motion? Yes, councillor.
I'd like to make the motion that council approves the city accounts presented by checks numbered twenty, two twenty thousand one thirty-four to twenty thousand two fifty-four for the total amounts of two hundred ninety-one thousand and thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And the payroll vouchers numbered eighty-eight forty-eight to eighty-nine twenty-three in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents for June tenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, do we have a secondary for that? Councillor Schramm, any further discussion there? You all in favor? And our last, is a motion to adjourn. Councillor Jones?
A motion to adjourn the June tenth, two thousand nineteen regular reading of council.
Secondary, councillor Tully, all in favor? Okay, thank you.